So I just wanted to make sure we're ready. Are we recording or doing whatever we need to do?
I think we're good. Mark, are we good?
All right, so Chair Simpson is here, Commissioner Kai, Vice Chair Kai.
President.
Commissioner Waidola.
President.
Commissioner Harsh.
President.
Commissioner Vance.
I'm here.
Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Giles, I did not see. All right, then it looks like we're ready for staff information on our work session HB 2001.
Excellent. That would be me. All right, so let me share my screen with you guys. And let's see, where is it? Can you guys all see that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, well, I'm Joy Chang, and good evening Commissioners and Council members. Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Let's see, tonight I'll be briefing you on the work we're currently conducting on codifying House Bill 2001 middle.
Alexandra Brown.
Oh.
Is now joining.
Excellent. So codifying House Bill 2001 middle housing, but also getting some policy direction from you guys is pretty much what tonight entails. So an overview of House Bill 2001, the Oregon Legislature passed HB 2001 in 2019 last year with the intent to increase housing choice and supply throughout the state. And the goals for it are are pretty much identified here in these five key goals. The first is more diverse affordable housing choices. Through affordability, though affordability is not a requirement for the House bill, the intention of the bill is to allow housing types that typically lower costs. These housing types could accommodate individuals like recent college students, first time home buyers. We've heard a lot of retirees, empty nesters, grandparents that want to live in the neighborhood or the community. The other is that traditional housing types allowed in most neighborhoods, many exist in Oregon's neighborhoods, including duplex, triplexes, and fourplexes built in the early 1900s. And cities can cite, set siting and design requirements. This project will identify the appropriate siting and design requirements for middle housing types through our current process that we're going through right now. And we're projecting that transitions.
Riquelde.
Is now exiting.
Oh, the transition will likely gradual, be gradual. Development of middle housing types can be allowed in some areas for decades, yet not many have built, have been built. Development of these types of housing will depend on local housing markets and the expertise of developers, builders, and contractors. And the city was fortunate enough to get a planning assistant local grant that funded this work. So we obtained a thousand, $100,000 grant from DLCD for it. So this slide shows the applicability of the House bill in relation to the comp plan update. So as you can see, House Bill 2001 applies to all cities, both inside and outside of the Metropolitan Service District boundary. Cities within the Metro Service District are considered.
Is now joining.
Cities within the Metro Service District are considered large cities, even though Sherwood population is under the 25,000 population threshold. House Bill 2000 requires large cities to accommodate middle housing types in residentially zoned areas. And these housing types are duplexes, triplexes, quads, fourplexes, townhomes or row homes, and cottage clusters. The city currently has drafted residential housing policies that's going to help inform the work. And I've identified Goals Three and Four, Sherwood Character and Planning to Complete Neighborhoods. This set of policies and objectives express the need for compatible and quality housing design with neighborhoods with access to parks and trails throughout the comprehensive plan. And then Goal Five, providing for a range of housing options that are affordable to current and future threshold at all income levels. And of course, this policy and set objectives speaks to the need of providing a wider range of housing options at different points for current and future residents of Sherwood. In best of first, this policy links what came out of the Housing Needs Analysis, which, you know, is a state requirement and that we have heard from the community. We heard support for townhomes, courtyard housing, and accessory dwelling units, and single-story homes for growing elderly population. So this slide basically addressed the timelines and public engagement. We're currently part of the evaluation existing conditions and code audit. And at the same time, stakeholders interviews have been, are currently being completed at this time. So the discussion that we're going to be having tonight is going to be framed around key policy questions that we sent out to you last week. And the draft matrix, where those questions came from, was sent out last night. Again, the code audit is the first phase that involves a thorough evaluation of existing zoning code. This draft code audit identifies areas that may present barriers to achieving compliance to House Bill 2001 and provides preliminary recommendation for the possible changes. The code, the draft code audit, is organized into three parts. If you guys had a chance to look at it, it identifies the code chapter or section. Another is recommended amendments. And finally, a third column identifies discussion. It incorporates the House Bill 2000 requirements as well as the outcomes of the stakeholder interviews and recommends, and recommends a number of potential amendments to the Sherwood Community Development Code. I do want to premise that the large city regulations, as far as standards, are being heard by Land Conservation and Development Commission tomorrow morning. And then ultimately, they'll adopt some administrative rules and the model code in implementing 2001. So they have to have the large city code, model code, completed by year's end as far as adoption. But the cities themselves don't have to finalize our work until June 30th of 2022. Let's see here. So these are the key seven policy questions that I have in front of you. The first slide only has four, and then the next slide has the last three. And in many of these policy direction, we've, I can possibly answer for you, and we've definitely identified before through other works. However, this is a public process that we have to go through, and staff needs guidance from the Planning Commission in continuing the conversation. So I'm just gonna dig right in, and then what my intent is, I'll read the policy question, identify some key points, and then we can have discussion, and then we can move on to the next policy question. So Policy One.
There are a couple of questions before you jump in. Go ahead.
Yes.
So Joy, I want to make sure that we understand that we're very mindful on time. We have less than 45 minutes before our hearing starts. And so I want to give everybody an opportunity to speak to the code audit, your policy questions, but you also sent out those, that draft graph that I think.
Yeah, the matrix.
The matrix.
And then the Appendix A also.
And I don't know what Appendix A is. I don't think I have.
It's like.
The amendments to future.
Yeah, it's like a parking lot where it's not part of the consultant's scope. So it could be something that we would identify in the future.
Obviously, I just got, we just got it all. Many of us read it. And I know that we might not have time to go fully through that entire document in addition to the policy questions. But since we all read the document or had an opportunity, I'd like to make sure that before we wrap up this meeting, that we, if there's any red hot button items that are on this audit, that we raise those up so we make sure that if we don't discuss them tonight, that you are aware of the discussion level that we're going to need to have with those. And then my other question had to do with the online visual preference survey that you're going to be producing. Have you drafted that yet or not?
Right, no, we have not yet. The consultant is currently drafting that at this time. But I do want to stress that this is a long process, and I wasn't expecting you guys to look, review and provide recommendation for the matrix that was sent to you guys all last night. But the matrix that I said, or that was provided, basically, these, these seven questions were the ones that we identified saying, okay, we need policy direction from the Planning Commissioners on, so that we can start looking in regards to those specific code amendments. And then you will be, through this whole process, be able to see all of your direction tonight will allow us to, will guide us to start drafting policies. But then, at the same time, you'll be able to look at them again. Again, this is just the first look. I wasn't expecting the dive in every single point on that matrix. That would have not been fair to all of you. If anything, I just wanted, we needed some general policy direction so we know how we should be addressing the things that they've identified.
So my, my biggest concern is that this matrix, we all read it, we didn't, I didn't understand that we weren't going to be fully discussing it. But there are some very, I say very detailed statements that are being made either by staff, consultant, or state that are alarming to me, and that I would like to either ensure that they're rewordsmithed as we go through this so that citizens getting a hold of this, or as we add to this, we're not adding to what I would consider to an alarming document that it is of great concern, which is why I want to say if there's two or three bullet points that people have, even though we're not going to discuss it tonight, that we do that. And I really think that this consultant, I'd like to get input on this online visual preference survey because many times these surveys say, in the perfect world, what would you like? And I would like to ensure that this survey incorporates costs and trade-offs, that if you're going to have this, you don't get this. And so we can't do pie in the sky when we're doing code because it's, we're at the point of implementation sooner than later, not as we are with the comprehensive plans. So those are, those are my initial concerns, and seeing if we can get this code implemented before HB 2001 gets started so that we can have some time to see some applications under our new residential code before we can't make any changes to it. So.
Okay.
That's what I had to say. I know Counselor Scott had comments next. Sorry.
I think you covered, you covered some good stuff there that I was hinting at as well. I guess my thought would be, obviously, we're going to need multiple work sessions on this between council and, and Planning Commission, no doubt. You know, one of the things that, when I read through this, that struck my eye is there's many of these questions and many of the potential recommendations in the matrix are around areas that, that aren't necessarily even applicable to HB 2001. They're, oh, by the way, we should also consider doing this, that, or the other thing. And I guess my thought around that is, we have, we have a parallel and different process that's ongoing right now, the comprehensive plan update, that at the, somewhere toward the end of that will include a, an entire round of code revisions based upon the comprehensive plan process. And, and any code revisions that aren't, you know, required as part of HB 2001, in my mind, should happen through that process instead. They shouldn't be short circuited into this just because it's convenient. Now, obviously, there's, there's overlap, right? There's, the world isn't perfect where there's a clear delineation between HB 2001 versus comp plan code updates. There's some gray area where things may live in both, and we can talk about that. But, but I guess as we go through this, my thinking is, if something is clearly not, you know, not in the realm of HB 2001, it shouldn't be part of this process. It should be part of the comprehensive plan code update process. That's my two cents.
Can you add a column that will tell us whether it's state-required HB 2001 or consultant recommendation, staff recommendation, or I say public as public council commission recommendation? So we can have a criteria, know why we, why we're doing something.
Yes, we can definitely add that within the matrix so that we can follow through as far as who suggested it. I do want to point out the model code that is being proposed is not just the basic requirements, but it is definitely aspirational above and beyond what would be minimally required. So I definitely.
But we're not, we're not talking about, no one's talking about adopting the model code, are we? I think.
No, no.
Then it doesn't matter.
Right, but I do want to say that if we don't adopt a House Bill 2001 amendments to, if we do nothing, we end up defaulting to the model code, is all I'm saying.
No one's saying do nothing.
Okay.
But the model code is only applicable if we're just going to adopt it, you know, across the board, which we're not.
Right.
The only thing that matters is what's required.
Correct, and the ultimate goal is whatever the basic requirements is so that we're in compliance, that is our goal for this project.
Okay, because that does not come across clear to me in reading this 18-page document because I see a lot of other things in there, well beyond the base requirements of HB 2001.
Okay, so I will definitely ask or insert a matrix or another column that identifies, is this a state mandate? Who's recommending it, you know, so that we know as far as get direction tied to that.
Joy, a question on that is, will, will there be clear delineation between what or where one comes from? Reading through a lot of this, it, it seems like a lot of this is, is recommendations to help or enhance HB 2001. I'm just curious if, if there's, if there's a lot of kind of murky area within that.
I don't know if it's murky, just because there's going to be state statute that basically dictates what a large city has to accommodate. And the key is, you know, there has to be a clear and objective standard for all, all residential development, from single-family to duplexes up to quads. So any type of single-family. So those are like the policy questions we were trying to ask you guys tonight, as in, you know, should we be changing our densities? Should we be having a two-track system where the first track would be the typical, you meet it or you don't, you know, you meet it and you get your permit? Or a second track would be, you don't meet it, that there's an option for you to get some modification?
So can we? I was gonna say, can we answer the other questions, and then we'll just start going through your questions then?
Okay, so.
Commissioner Vance has a, has his hand raised next, I think.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, a quick question for some of the more newbies in the, in the room here. A lot of references made to this DLCD. Who, who is that? And is that part of the state? What legal jurisdiction or purview do they have here that they're requiring things that appear to be above and beyond or part of HB 2001? And maybe one of the broader questions is from my understanding is who are all the players here that we have to comply with? Is Metro like wrapped up in this too? And like, who are all the people we have to make happy?
Erica, did you want to?
Yeah, I can definitely take that on. So DLCD is the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They're the state's kind of planning agency for the state. So as you know, we have certain, so in our comp plan, we, there's like 19 state planning goals. They're the agency, you know, that makes sure that, you know, all cities and counties are meeting those state mandated goals. So that agency, you know, is putting together the, you know, administrative rules for HB 2001. So they're a major player in this because this is a, this is a state legislative action, House Bill 2001. Metro isn't necessarily a part of this because it, because it was a state action.
So DLCD is going to ultimately determine whether or not our code is in compliance with the minimum state standards requirements. And if we don't meet the DLCD minimum requirements, they will force us to do the model code. So we, they, they are, they'll be grading our paperwork at the end of the process.
And so does the law, does HB 2001 give them the ability to do that? Basically, it's written, that's how the law's written? I see.
Correct.
Well, essentially, they're, they're in the rulemaking right now, so they're, they're, but yes, as the rules are, are developed, they are responsible for enforcing those rules.
And interpreting them, it seems.
And, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Rosner has a question.
I do. Thank you for letting me intrude upon your meeting this evening. I appreciate it. I, a quick question, Joy, you mentioned a parking lot of ideas. And when I did the interview, I can't remember her name, because there was a lot of suggestions that I think are coming from many quadrants in terms of how to deal with the, I will say nicely, the side effects of what HB 2001 can potentially bring to our community, like parking issues, that, you know, those types of things. Is, has there been any thought given, either at the commission level or staff level, kind of the timing of how all this occurs? Because if we implement the bare bones of the model rules, making sure that we have some of those other things in place to maybe help, you know, blunt the effect of some of this stuff. And like, parking is a big one for me, you know, as, as the number of cars per household is ever increasing, especially as more college kids are graduating and staying at home, that's becoming a real issue in our city. So just as an example, has there been some thought on the timing and how this meshes with the overall comprehensive plan update?
So can I weigh in what my comment was to Erica this afternoon? So little history that Old Town Design Standards were put forth, and they have to go through the Planning Commission. They are a bit onerous because the original vision was that we would put these plans out, see how they worked, and then loosen it up so it didn't have to come to Planning Commission once we saw a few things, whether they worked or we didn't work. And we haven't, it, it didn't work as well as now making it simpler because that step fell by the wayside. It never went back to being. But I would suggest that one of the key elements that we're going to want to ensure to keep Sherwood looking and feeling like Sherwood is that we have our design standards in place prior to implementing House Bill 2001 code. So I would say if we can quickly get residential design standards that apply to all areas within our community and get that hearing process very quickly through so that design standards for all development in the residential zone exist, then when we layer on the House Bill 2001, we are able to, to incorporate it, and because we'll go through a second code process, we will have time to tweak those, learn from the applications that came in during that 12 months between the time that we implement the first code change to the time that we implement House Bill 2001. And we, we already have to have a code hearing for House Bill 2001. So if we can tweak what we do immediately with the residential design standards, that was, that was my recommendation, and Erica was nodding, nodding now and nodding with me on the phone when we were trying to discuss that, so.
Love it. That sounds awesome.
So.
And Jean, you just covered, you know, two of our policy questions right there.
Jean, as long as I've known you, you've been, you've been a consistent voice, and correctly so, for, for residential design standards. And hopefully, we finally get there, because you're right, that, that does, to me, that it should be the first priority. Agreed.
Thank you. So I see Commissioner Vance's hand is up. I don't know if that is another question. Okay. All right, no problem. So Joy, we lost your screen.
Yeah, I just wanted to see everyone during this whole conversation. So let me reshare my screen again. Let me, where am I? There I am. All right, so are you guys seeing that?
So can we hit some of the, or do we want to go in, yeah, go in order? And just maybe, let's see, we have about 25 minutes. There's seven questions. So we have only a couple of minutes per ones, and then we can come back through.
Okay, so are you guys, are you seeing what I'm seeing?
Yep.
Okay. Kind of move us through. Okay. So the first question, the key policy questions that we're asking you tonight is, should existing residential density range be modified? So.
Sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? As, as we start this, I guess I just want to say, after talking with Erica today, just so that there's not any misconception, some of these, we think we know what the answer is going to be, but we have to ask the question nonetheless. And so don't, don't take the questions for anything more than them just being a question that we want an answer for. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there that it's okay if the answer is no. And, and, and we're just seeking certainty on what your answers are to some of these policy questions.
So my first question, my first answer is, no, we've been working and we're in compliance. Unless you want to allow lesser density, that would be what I hear people in the community talk about for making sure that we keep livable community. We have, all the other things that House Bill 2001 are going to require is going to almost immediately double what our density is allowed just by default, allowing townhomes. So I don't think adding more density is going to be desirable. I can do a quick. Anybody have any other comments about that?
Jean, I, I completely agree with you. You know, I think if it is going to be modified, it shouldn't be through this track of processes, as Counselor Scott recommended. You know, it belongs in, in another, through another avenue, so.
Yeah, through the comprehensive plan update.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, moving, any other comments before we move on? All right, okay. Policy question two, should new detached single-family dwellers be subject to a clear and objective review? Or should any single-family and middle housing types be permitted without review? So before you guys all start answering, the Planning Commission and City Council previously discussed this concept at their joint meeting on October 27th, so that, so that you guys can have some background.
And what, what is your, what is your interpretation of what that, what the results of that was?
Do you want me to step in here, Joy?
Yes, please.
Okay, so policy question number two and policy question number four are kind of, you know, linked together in a way. We know that we want, it sounds like what I heard from Planning Commission and City Council at our last joint work session is we want design standards for the whole gamut of housing in Sherwood from single-family to multifamily development. And with HB 2001, we have to, you know, how we treat the review process for these types. for these types has to remain consistent across the board. So if we want design standards for all housing, then we should, you know, we should be able to, to provide some kind of, you know, checklist, a clear and objective like review checklist when people come in and, and build these types of units, you know, that we look at prior to, you know, handing out a permit, you know, a building permit.
Yeah, it would be similar to how we do the commercial design standards right now. Is if you can check all the boxes, you go through an expedited process. Otherwise, you go through a more comprehensive review. Does anybody have any concern or question about why we would not do that for our residential?
Well, I think we can't do that without, without comprehensive design guidelines, right, Jean?
Right, well, and that's what we would do is create Yeah, in the, when we actually get to code language, we would create code right, right on, right, like we have in the commercial. Yep, so yes, we'd do that as part of the code writing part of this exercise in March.
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, I was just saying, as long as that's in place, then I think if that's possible, but definitely not without it, so.
Overcomplicating my, the, the explanation, but I just want to make sure because Commissioner Simpson was talking about the commercial design standards. And I envision a different process, I mean, similar standards, you know, that there's, there's standards and you either meet them or you don't. But with the commercial design standards, you currently go through site plan review essentially. So that, that goes through a hearing process or a review process. And so I guess I just want to question, and maybe we don't need that answer now, but I don't think you want every single, single-family home to have to go through that level of process. So there will be a, a smaller process, if you will, for reviewing those building types against those design standards.
That, yeah, definitely. And if we could ensure, you know, like model code from Lake Oswego or something that already has existing design standards, so we don't have to create the wheel. We can come up with something where we could all go to that community and say, yep, those design standards work for them, and let's see if we can mirror those and adopt them for check mark on smaller projects. Yes, absolutely.
All right, so number three is somewhat, as far as the question, is tied to this whole conversation where should we have a discretionary review tract to provide in addition to that clear and objective review process required by two thousand and one, House Bill two thousand and one? And what I'm envisioning here, just like the design matrix that we have for commercial or residential, or commercial and industrial, if they can't meet like four of the six standards, they have an option of asking for a modification or an adjustment, but it would kick it up to another level review. So it's a true, two-track system that we're considering. One is a clear and objective, which typically would be like a type-one checklist. They, they meet all of this, then they can get their building permit. And the second would be a tract two, which would be a higher review. So there could be some type of discretion. And I know that the House Bill allows us to go through a two-track system so that people, you know, if they can't meet all of them, there's an opportunity for the applicants to make their case.
I, I think that's a fabulous idea. One thing that I don't like with our current industrial code is they only have to meet four of the six and they pick the four easy ones. And I think when we go into the residential, there's some key elements that we want to ensure are in our residential. So we would have a baseline that would
There'd be a baseline set that everyone has to meet no matter what, and then there may be additional ones and you have to meet half of those or four out of six of those or something like that. But the baseline ones can't always have to be met.
Perfect, yes. My example is no blank walls on the street-facing side. You know, that's, that's an easy one for everybody to understand. When an applicant comes in, they'll go, okay, well, I have to do this, but, you know, what other ones do I have to do? Or can I get away with not doing?
Excellent. Any other comments on that?
Just, just a question about the industrial design or the other standards. Is applying that to residential obviously makes sense. Is there, is there something in the works to try to remedy that for, for the other design standards? Do we know?
For industrial and commercial?
So the, what Jean just brought up, you know, in, in regards to our industrial design standards, we're not taking a look at those currently. That's something that Planning Commission could take on in the future, if so desired.
It, it's the, I don't think we've had that many applications come through under the industrial because we don't have that many applications. And that's again, why in the Old Town area. And even for this, I'm suggesting that we start with a tighter situation so that we can, before we just send it to a hearings officer or something else at a staff level decision, that it be a more strenuous review process until we know that our code works. Unless we get a code that we're, that's fully vetted, that we can implement and feel comfortable that we're going to end up with the result that the community wants.
Right, and you will be able to, you know, since you guys are guiding us today, our consultant will work in regards to getting these design standards and also creating a checklist for us and as a starting point. And then we can definitely build on it until we're satisfied. And then definitely, you know, before implementation, we can try it out to see if it's, if they're doable through some land use application.
Go, go to, go to six other applications that are in the community and see if they would have passed or failed.
Exactly. So we've already answered the policy question four in regards to consider adding design standards. And the answer is yes for all residential development. So I'm just going to move us on to the last three. So five is, should we revise the parking standards to allow garage space to count towards the off-street parking requirements? We're asking this because currently we don't count the garage area as towards the parking. And so we thought, well, let's ask you guys. Give us some guidance in regards to should we start counting this? And typical approach in other jurisdictions, they do allow greater flexi, you know, allowing this allows greater flexibility in site and building design. Definitely, there could be potential impacts on on-street parking. Something for you guys to consider.
So I'll just jump in here.
Commissioner Giles had raised his hand.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So I was just going to say, it feels like we already have parking problems in several areas of the city. And so I would be, I would, I guess I'd be in favor of it if we're looking over, you know, a two-and-a-half car garage or a three, you know what I mean? Like if, if, if you're, if you're going to larger garages, then yeah, I could see how, let's let one of those spaces count. But if you allow for, you know, front-to-back garages, or, you know, those extended ones or two-car garage or one-car garage to count, it feels like as soon as a neighbor fills it up, they're going to be on the street and it will make the parking worse. So I don't know that in the standard policy, it seems like we should allow to count for that because that doesn't address our problem with parking in a lot of the areas.
Yeah, would potentially make it worse. The, I'll just say that parking complaints are, we have a new traffic safety commission that started. Parking complaints is one of the, if not the, the largest complaint the city, the city, that committee hears about. And certainly on City Council, I can tell you, we hear about it all the time. People in this community do not want bigger parking problems than we already have. And, and frankly, the other jurisdictions in question maybe have, maybe they're more, you know, they have more transit options. They have more density already, right? We're, we're on the outskirts. We're, we're barely in the metro area. So I think applying what, what works in Hillsborough or Beaverton or Gresham or Tiger or even Tualatin, it, it doesn't, it's not the same at all, but.
Agreed. Counselor Rosner?
Sorry, I was on mute. I, I, Doug and several others just stole my thunder on that. So I would just add that, just quickly jumping to the next item, the same issue applies with reducing front and rear setbacks depending on the application because that allows for parking in driveways. So we have to be very careful about that as well when it comes to parking.
Agreed. So we're moving on to number six about reducing front and rear setbacks. I have no desire to do that. This, I guess, we can, we can call Commissioner Giles. And then I would just ask if anybody wants to, if anybody on the commission wants to look at that as an option. How, how would you approach it? So Commissioner Giles?
Yeah, so the only way I would consider it on the rear is if we get some of those, you know, the rear entry kind of alleyways that some of, you know, that I've seen in Villebois where that's how you get into the garage and it's, it's not, you know, I, I might be willing to consider if it's, if it's like, you know, hey, only the homeowners are driving down this and they're just using it to get into their parking or their garage. It's not a, i- it's not the part that's facing the street and stuff like that. But I, I would, you know, I don't, I don't know what they are currently. But I, I was going to say that the only way I would consider it is if it is integral to the design and it was, you know, making the middle housing, you know, viable if, if it was a part of, you know, if it was part of the design because we're able to have the common area and the parks and stuff like that out in front of it potentially.
All right, Commissioner Kai?
Going off of what Commissioner Giles is saying, in, in, in Coeur d'Alene in Idaho, a lot of how their residential had developed is, is, is like Commissioner Giles is, is talking about. There's a, there's a central alleyway between two housing blocks where garage access is, is through the rear. And so there's no driveways and no garages on the front. And that, like that in itself makes for a really nice aesthetic. I don't, obviously Sherwood hasn't developed that way. If, if that, if, if that were a way that were looked at, I think it, it would have to be, you know, kind of something all-inclusive of, of, of a, of a new development itself. But I think that's, that's one example of how that's a, a successful execution of that. But outside of something like that, you know, with the way that Sherwood is, I think to reduce setbacks, I, I think would, would infringe directly on, you know, that, that character that we identify, I, I sure would, so.
Thank you. Commissioner, Counselor Rosner, you have another comment on that?
Only that I forgot to take my hand down.
So any other commissioners' comments on setbacks?
All right, the very last policy question we have tonight is should new subdivisions be able to do average minimum lot sizing, averaging? So currently, a fifteen percent reduction provision is permitted outright for infill development. And of course, allowing lot size averaging would allow greater flexibility within the development and encourage housing variety.
Jean, or, sorry, Joy, what does that mean?
So let's just take a prime example, not just a subdivision, so let's just do a two-lot partition, right? So one lot could be four thousand and the other, and the minimum size is five thousand square feet. One lot could be four thousand square feet, the other could be six thousand. So there's an average where, you know, add those two together, you're still meeting the minimum lot size standards of five thousand square feet. But one is, provides flexibility where one could be a smaller lot versus the other.
So if you extend that to a larger footprint, let's say you were building, you know, that subdivision, you could say, okay, in this section of this, in my minute, I'm in, I'm in medium-density residential high, so I have to hit five thousand square foot minimum. So you could say, okay, in this part of the subdivision, I'm going to build townhomes, let's say, that are two thousand square foot lots. And then somewhere else in, or the rest of the subdivision, or most of the subdivision would be six or seven thousand square foot lots potentially. And then your average is still going to be over five. Correct me if I'm wrong, that can be done now through a PUD, right?
Right, that's why this, but it can be happening through a subdivision.
Right, it ha, you'd have to come, so, so it's allowable now. They just have to, like, like Woodhaven, for example, has that section of townhomes that is under the minimum that, that the rest of Woodhaven has, but that came in through a PUD. So they were able to get that as part of the PUD process. So a developer to building a subdivision could easily still accomplish this goal through the PUD. If we change the code to say you can just average no matter what, then anybody building a subdivision could just do it without going through the PUD process. Which means we would lose control over, potential control over how, how the PUD, how the, the whole subdivision itself looks and feels and compares to the surrounding community and all that review process that the commission has right now through the PUD process, we would have no, no control over at all.
But with a PUD, definitely there typically is a constraint that's tied to it.
Think we lost Joy, but I, I would, I understand. So I'm assuming what she was going to talk about, the constraint and the cost that is a PUD is involved. But I would also mirror what you're saying is that the PUD has a benefit of affording the commission an opportunity to look at it because once you start doing averaging on the lot sizes, then you are, the applicant ends up coming in and asking for reduced setbacks, reduced lot, lots widths. And some of the other things that lot averaging does is you don't have the same amount of parking out front when you have smaller lot widths. It, it compounds a problem and the PUD process affords us the opportunity to review it. So if we did do minimum lot size averaging, I think it would be appropriate to you'd have to, you'd have to make such a complicated process to be able to ensure that you still get parking, you still get setbacks, you still get. I don't know how you could, it would be a lot, in my opinion, it would be a lot to tackle to still ensure that we're going to do it. And the PUD process does that already without having to recreate the code.
You'd just end up with a second PUD process essentially.
Yeah, we would be crafting a PUDs process that everybody would use.
How much?
Well, how much does it matter? I mean, this, this new bill, it doesn't deal with lot sizes, or they tell it deals with, doesn't matter on both the examples, the four thousand and the six thousand. You can build a quadplex, and that's that.
That's a good point. This, this particular question really is a germane to HB two thousand and one anyway. I think it was one of the additional, like, hey, while we're in here, we should consider this kind of thing.
So we have about eight minutes before we have to start the hearing. I wanted to give everybody a chance to just say, oh, she's back, but she may be muted. Joy, are you muted?
Yeah, sorry, I have been having internet problems, so I'm just thankful I got back.
Okay, well, I, I told them that PUDs are cost prohibitive and I was guessing that's what you were going with. And Erica probably made the notes that. And Erica probably made the notes that Counselor Scott and I had concerns that the PUD process serves more than just lot averaging. It ensures setbacks, lot widths, and parking is met. And so short of recreating a PUD permanent code within our existing code, the PUD serves a purpose.
Correct, okay.
And it's not part of the HB 2001 requirement, correct?
No, no, that's, that's why we're just asking as far as for subdivisions in general, but it's not touching about the PUDs at all. Okay, so I value everyone's time and I know we have seven minutes until the actual hearings are, will start. So I just want to, as far as next steps, summarize, again, there's going to be more opportunities to further discuss the code audit and refinements to the amendments that we're going to be drafting based on the policy direction you guys have given us tonight. So this is not going to be the last time you'll be able to review and provide comment. And also there'll be a public outreach. So again, I'm going to stress that the city has until June of 2022 for final adoption to be in compliance. From June of 2021, which the consultant will finish this work, to a whole year, we're going to have further discussion in regards to, that will occur. And again, public engagement will also occur at that time. If you guys have any questions, feel free to reach out to me or Erica tied to this. We also have a project webpage is, if you look in Sherwood, Oregon, and you can just do, or search residential development code update, you'll find a summary of what the work is, where, where the work is and what's happening at this time. So again, the planning, a visual preference survey is currently being created. And we're hoping to get something online in the new year, but we'll loop you guys in once we have drafts in regards to what that's going to look like.
So when do you plan on adopting the residential design standards?
Well, from the direction you guys gave us tonight, you're asking for residential design standards sooner than later. So we can try to implement them to see if they truly do work before formally adopting the House bill regulation.
Okay, so quickly, so the matrix itself, is it online right now?
It is not currently online at the moment, no. We wanted to get, you know, your kind of feedback, just your initial, you know, review and thoughts on it before we do anything else.
So, so if you could resend this out with the columns that say HB 2000 required consultant, staff, commission. And then, because we ran out of time, but I really thought there were probably a couple of people that had concerns about a few of these items.
Yes, we definitely will put a new column so that you guys can know exactly where the policy came from as far as the direction.
You're muted, Counselor Scott?
Sorry, did you say you had a, a page? I think you just mentioned a minute ago, there was a page about, that you have, you called it something, Joy?
There's the appendix.
No, no, like a webpage.
Yes, we do.
We do have a project page online on the city's website for this, the residential housing code update.
Yep, just do that search.
Gotcha, I, I'm wondering if we shouldn't come up with a better name? Because I think that we're going to do another residential housing code update related to comprehensive plan. And this one is germane specific to HB 2001, and I think that can be confusing to people. They may think this is the, they may think this is the only one and right, and they'll be, well, why isn't, why are, why are we only talking about these very specific things through this process? When we actually have a whole second process that's going to talk about a wider array of things, like for example, all these other middle housing types, we've gotten a lot of community feedback about those that are preferred by our community over others. And I assume when we get into implementation of our comprehensive plan update and the code that follows, we may decide to implement code that, that promotes, you know, cottage clusters, for example, over some of the other alternatives that were less favored by the community. We're not going to be talking about that apart, as part of this current ongoing process that we started tonight. We're only talking about HB 2001 implementation in, in this process. So it feels like that name is a little misleading. It feels like it's a comprehensive update and it's really not.
About, how about HB 2001 and residential design standard review? Because it's kind of two, two, two parts to that thing. How's that sound, Counselor Scott?
Yeah, I'm not good at naming things, I'm only good at complaining about the names I don't like.
Okay, I like that too.
All right, we will work on that to make it more clear so that there's a, a difference. And, you know, hopefully guide people that there's two, two things that are happening at the same time. All right.
And then a third one coming later.
Yes, all right, so thank you again, everyone, for your time this evening. We do appreciate it and definitely you've guided, provided us guidance and as we move forward. And we will talk to you soon in regards to the next steps.
Thank you very much.
All right, have a great night, you guys.
Thanks. So we all have to pop over to the other meeting. And I think if we, we're going to get over there for our seven o'clock meeting, but because we're just ending, I would like everybody to have an opportunity to have a five-minute recess. If I don't get a recess, my computer is going to die because it's not plugged in, so I need to go find a charger. So I'm going to plug, pop over to the other meeting and then tell everybody we're continuing.
Thanks.